Here.
Mr. Danyum?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A Tax Assessor's Result Report.
For hearing date held March 13, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B Tax Assessor's Report. For hearing date to be held April 10, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3C Minutes of the Scranton Firefighters Pension Commission Meeting, held February 20, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3D Minutes of the Scranton Police Pension Commission Meeting, held February 20, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
Excuse me, I omitted, um, 3D Minutes of the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting, held February 20, 2019.
Any comments? Received and filed.
3F Minutes of the Composite Pension Board Meeting, held February 20, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3G Agenda for the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting, held March 20, 2019.
Are there any comments? Received and filed.
3H Agenda for the City Planning Commission Meeting, to be held March 27, 2019.
Are there any comments? Received and filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time?
Uh, yes, I have a couple. Uh, Jog for Jude will be held Sunday, April 28th, at 9:00 a.m. at the Dunmore Community Center. Uh, the Funca- the 5K Run and One Mile Fun Walk will benefit Sid's research being conducted at the Boston Children's Hospital, as well as the St. Joseph's Center Baby Pantry. Uh, you can register for the race at judezayacfoundation.com. Uh, the St. Joe's Young Professionals will also be hosting a Jog for Jude Happy Hour this Friday from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Backyard Ale House. A $10 donation is suggested, and guests are encouraged to bring baby clothing and/or toiletries for the St. Joseph's Baby Pantry. Um, and also, the city of Scranton will be establishing a Complete Count Committee to bring consent- to bring together citizens and/or community leaders to increase awareness and motivate residents to respond to the 2020 census. If you or your organization would like to be a part of the Complete Count Committee, we will be holding an informational session along with representatives of the Census Bureau this Thursday, March 28th, at 5:30 at PAS across from City Hall. And then I'll have more on the Complete Count Committee in fifth order. Thank you.
I have one. Um, I received a- an interesting call this afternoon from a, uh, resident. She wanted me to mention, and I did not know this, for those of you in the audience who might have, uh, Greek ancestry, uh, today is actually Greek Independence Day. So, I just wanted to, uh, mention that and hope that we're celebrating our Greek culture in the city of Scranton. I had a very interesting conversation with this woman who explained all of the different contributions from, uh, our Greek ancestors uh, to the city of Scranton. We do have a very strong Greek culture in the city. Um, I would also like to ask Mrs. Reed if you could, uh, send a letter to the mayor uh, asking if he would be interested next year in raising the, uh, Greek flag. Uh, this woman in front of City Hall, uh, for Greek Independence Day. This woman had mentioned that years ago that was done every, uh, March 25th. So, see if we can start that tradition again. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Joan Hoda-Wannitz.
Joan Hoda-Wannitz, city resident and taxpayer. Okay, who up there is having a baby? And, and status?
Well, I'm not having it. My wife is.
When?
Uh, she's due Saturday. But I'm not having the baby. My wife is. I shouldn't have raised my hand.
Okay, okay. Well, you, you helped.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll be expecting an update next Monday.
If you don't see me here, that's why.
Pictures if possible.
Yes.
Okey-dokey. Um, Item 7B, the grant for renovations to City Hall. I sat through Highland's presentation during the caucus. I found it very interesting. I found the pictures very informative. Um, but I, I want people to, you know, think about all sides of this question. Uh, the article that Jim Lockwood, um, had in the paper on March 9th, I believe it was, maybe later. Uh, no, it was later, March 20th. What was it? It was later, March 19th or something. Um, Mayor Couright asked the question, who would want to buy this building and where would we go? Um, and I was talking with Jim, and the idea came up that, well, maybe Lackawanna College might want to buy this building. It's close to their footprint, number one. Number two, they could use it as a administrative building, much like, um, University of Scranton uses the estate. Um, they did a really good job renovating and maintaining Central High School. Uh, anybody who's been in there for some of their events, it's really been well-capped and well-maintained. Um, and where might you go? Well, what about that white elephant on Lackawanna Avenue which goes by the, the name of Southern Union? I don't know if that's for sale, but, you know, things just to keep in your hip pocket as you study this, this pro- this problem. Uh, the other thing I checked out was I pulled, uh, the paperwork from the Knowles Insurance Contract, uh, for all the city properties. Originally, City Hall was being insured for $6,542,570. But as you recall, they had to update that list because on that list were items like the Scranton Public Library, which the city did not own. So, under the revised list, they were insuring the City Hall for $9,620,570, which is still below the $10.7 million estimate from Highland. And on top of that, I suspect that as, if Highland were to renovate this building, as they went through the process and they were looking at asbestos and lead and mold remediation as those issues come up, I think the price is going to go up, not down. It's just my gut feeling. So, uh, I also looked at the, um, um, editorial in The Times yesterday, uh, about, uh, the renovation. And I have to agree with the editorial's, um, opinion that before the state would grant any money for this project, the city would have to produce its long-term maintenance plan to maintain this property. I mean, why throw good money after bad? You don't want to do that. Uh, and speaking of money, I still think that the city should have a long-term maintenance project or plan for all of its major properties. Have we not had to make emergent repairs to more than one firehouse because of maintenance neglect? Uh, what about the parks? Have we not had to do a lot with the Novem- Novembrino Park and its pool that was not maintained? We have a checkered history of not maintaining municipal properties, and in the end, the taxpayer has to pick up the bill. So, whether you renovate City Hall and keep it as City Hall or not, I think you have to address the issue of maintenance of city properties. If nothing else, this project has put a spotlight on that issue. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Gerard Hetman?
Good evening, council. Gerard Hetman from the Lackawanna County Commissioner's Office. Uh, to begin this evening first, Mr. Gahn, actually, I'm happy to note that earlier this morning, uh, the Lackawanna County Commissioners did raise the Greek flag in front of the county courthouse in commemoration of Greek Independence Day. A few years back, we were approached by some county residents with Greek heritage, and they wanted to commemorate that holiday. So, we've done it a few times over the last few years. Um, we're happy to do it this year. So, the Greek flag is flying downtown. Uh, certainly, I think in the future, it would be great to see it at City Hall. You know, as it is for many holidays, both here at City Hall and at the courthouse, uh, different flags of different nationalities are flown in celebration. But, uh, we do have it here now downtown for this year, so, uh, check it out if you can. It should be up for most of this week. So. Uh, our notes here tonight. Uh, first, the Lackawanna County Commissioners' Spring 2019 Blood Drive, in conjunction with the American Red Cross, will be held Friday, April 26th, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Lackawanna County Government Center at the Globe. Our first blood drive in the newly renovated building. Uh, walk-ins are accepted, but appointments are preferred, uh, for the convenience of both donors and the Red Cross staff. Please call 570-963-6743, extension 1872, to set up an appointment. Second, the Pennsday Extension Master Gardener Spring Open House will take place Saturday, March 30th, noon to 3:00 p.m. at the Plowet Hearth at the Shops at Montage. Info on tree care, house plants for an indoor garden, container gardening, and more will be available. For more information, call 570-963-6842, or email lackawannaMG@psu.edu. Third, the Lackawanna County Disabilities Action Committee Training, uh, will offer a training, excuse me, on the Americans with Disabilities Act. It's Thursday, June 27th, at the Hilton Scranton and Conference Center. It's conducted by the Mid-Atlantic ADA Training Center out of Rockville, Maryland. 9:00 a.m. to noon, there's a session on local government compliance with the ADA, and then 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., a session on compliance for retail establishments, restaurants, and bars. The cost is $30 per person to attend one session, or $50 to attend both sessions. Lunch is served if you attend either or both sessions. Uh, to register, just email KWilliams@mycil.org. That's M-Y-C-I-L for the domain name dot org. Fourth, the Vietnam Veteran Commemoration Event will take place on Saturday, April 27th, 11:00 a.m. at the Lackawanna County Government Center at the Globe. All U.S. military veterans who served on active duty between November 1st, 1955, and May 15th, 1975, regardless of location, are invited to receive a free commemorative Vietnam Veteran lapel pin. This follows an event we did last September. I'm going to say we had approximately 75 veterans in attendance who received this recognition, and we invite anyone to come and commemorate the event, but especially any veterans who fit that criteria are more than welcome and encouraged to attend. Uh, Lackawanna County is, of course, a commemorative partner with the Vietnam War Commemoration Program run by the Department of Defense, so we're happy to put another one of these events on this year. Uh, also, in our Parks and Recreation, registration's open for our Junior Golf Clinic, Women's Golf Clinic, and Outdoor Basketball Clinic. You can call 570-963-6764 for dates, location, and registration costs for each of those programs. Each of them comes up in a few weeks here, uh, to, out to a few months. Uh, we're starting to see those programs open up, so we're happy to see registrations come in. Um, and also, on a Parks and Recreation note, uh, McDate Park will host what I believe is our inaugural Easter egg hunt, uh, Saturday, April 13th, at McDate Park. Pre-registration is at 11:00 a.m., open to children of all ages. And the same number for that, 570-963-6764. Last year, I filled in at the park, uh, one day a week when some staff changes had occurred, and a lot of people actually called requesting that type of program or thinking that we hosted one that was actually held somewhere else. So, you know, it's a chance to meet some public demand, we think, uh, reasonable to do with staffing and budget. So, we're happy to offer that program, uh, because the public, we think, wants it. So, it should be a good time. And then also, last but not least, the County Conservation District is doing their 2019 Seedling Sale. Uh, it's 13 different trees, bushes, and flowers available for seedling sales. Orders must be submitted by Wednesday, April 10th. Uh, the proceeds benefit the programs run by the Lackawanna County Conservation Districts. For more information or to place an order, call 570-382-3086. And that's all we have. Uh, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Lenny Cerebro?
Lenny Cerebro, Scranton resident. Hi, kids. Miss me? I missed you guys. Um, okay, I haven't been here since, uh, uh, right around the beginning of December or the end of November. But at that time, I'll remind you what was going on. Uh, one of the neighbors, Gene Besko, uh, who was an engineer and had the maps of all the drainage pipes, um, we had Mr. Pochus come out, we had Dennis Gallagher come out and look at this pipe that's di- was discontinued some years ago. And, uh, boy, they agreed that's a really cheap fix to get that pipe working again. But at that time, the weather was getting cold, the ground was getting hard, and they agreed, uh, that, uh, as soon as the weather breaks, something, something will be done about getting that pipe opened up again. Um, we learned that it was just closed off for no reason at all. Uh, it's not like it rotted away and broke or anything. Just, uh, you know, people building houses in that area. Somehow, that pipe got bulldozed, bulldozed over. Uh, we have pictures of the bu- bulldozer, you know, discontinuing that pipe. And anyway, uh, uh, we all agreed that's, that's such an easy fix. It, it's not going to permanently fix the complete flooding problem, you know, in, in the neighborhood area there. But, uh, it's going to alleviate a lot of that water that, because that pipe is discontinued, it makes its way, uh, down Brig Street to Merrifield, down to Lafayette Street, and into that retention pond that's blocked solid now and just goes on. The water runoff is on the property. Now, i- it's really a true thing about the climate change that, that's happening, and this flooding problem is going to get so much worse. Um, you know, uh, I, most of you know I had the fire. I lost the house and about a year ago, I, you know, we built a, a brand-new house there, uh, but still, the whole area and my yard gets flooded, my garage gets flooded. We were smart enough to build a new house up high so that doesn't get flooded, but, you know, all the other neighbors still get it. Uh, um, even somebody, uh, purchased a house on my rear lot where the garage is, that house that was, uh, went into foreclosure. You know, a young couple with four kids, four small kids, bought the house, uh, from a sheriff's sale. And jeez, I, you know, I met him and we talked a little bit, and I asked him if he was aware of the flooding problem back here. He said, nope, nobody ever told him anything about it. He's, he's in for a big surprise because the water goes right from my property onto his property and then goes to the next property and keeps going down. Um, but I'm wondering what the process is now to get the ball rolling, you know, on this pipe that we discovered that's going to alleviate a lot of the problems that everybody agreed is a cheap fix, you know, rather than, you know, a big nightmare thing of fixing the whole area.
Right. Well, Lenny, first of all, I missed you. I'm happy to see you again. Uh, it's been, it's been a couple of months. Uh, but I know exactly what you're talking about. I was actually in a room with Mr. King, Gallagher, and Pochus, and they brought this up, that they have spoken to you about it. And Mr. King was generally excited about it, of the possibility of that pipe being a quick and easy, uh, relief for that problem. He, uh, he gave kudos to the person who discovered it, brought it to his attention, and it's exactly how you explain it, was once the weather broke, they were going to be able to dig there and see the condition of that pipe and if it's actually able to be used.
That's right. They were going to inspect it, send the camera down it, but the way that I understand, uh, Gene Besko, who, you know, videoed the bulldozing over and the discontinuing of that pipe, you know, he really knows that kind of stuff, and he said that was a perfectly good pipe.
And everybody in that room agreed. Uh, Mrs. Reed, could we get correspondence sent to Mr. King, uh, Mr. Gallagher, Mr. Pochus? Uh, they're all aware of this project or this proposed project. If we can get a timetable on when they think they can get out there and, uh, we could take a look at it and get the ball rolling, as you said, and then copy the administration on it, and then, of course, all the council members to make sure we're in the loop in it as well. Thank you.
So, then, so then what would be the next step that I could hear something, or just keep checking?
Yep. I, we'll hear from, we'll hear from either Mr. King or Mr. Pochus. Uh, then Mr. Gallagher will be the one to, uh, to get out on site and actually get down there and do it. Then he'll make his report. I'm sure Mr. King, Mr. Pochus, or both will want to be there during the work to see firsthand. And then, once we have eyes on it, then we'll have an idea of timeframe. Now, I'm just kind of the facilitator, you know, I don't, I don't have any kind of expertise. But these guys, once they see it, will have a good indication of, you know, that what would come next and the timeline behind it. But, you know, they're, they're, you know, you hate to knock on wood because when does every, anything go as quickly as planned around here? But they were optimistic, and on paper, that was a, a very good idea, good discovery, and a, and a very liable.
See, and, and you all know, I've been very patient, you know, like, but,
More, more than.
Now that everybody agreed this is a pretty good idea, you know, I would want to stay out of it. Thank you.
Les Spindler?
Good evening, council. Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. Councilman Rogan, I can't believe you're going to even entertain the idea of selling this building. I think it's a beautiful historic building. I don't care how much it costs, I think it should be restored. And if it's sold, who do you think's going to buy it? Either the thieves up on Mulberry Street, or the thieves up on Vine Street, meaning Lackawanna or University of Scranton. The reason I say thieves, because I've said this year after year after year, even though this isn't a taxpaying building, they're taking all our taxpaying buildings off the tax rolls. And myself and all the other taxpayers suffer. They pay us a mere pittance every year. And so, I don't want to see them in this building. They'll buy this, then if the Fidelity Bank closes next door, they'll buy that, and they'll work their way all through town. It's time to stop right now. So, this building can't be sold, restore it. Uh, while I'm on that subject, I meant to bring this up last time I was here, about the university paying their fair share. And I brought this up a year or two ago, where Princeton, New Jersey sued Princeton University. And now Princeton University has to pay taxes. So, and you people probably didn't even look into that, did you?
I, I have. That's been brought here, as long as I've been at council. People, yourself and others, have, have brought that up. And the way it's been explained to me from different attorneys is because the different, the laws are different in each state regarding the nonprofits. Um, I agree that there are parts of, particularly University of Scranton, that should be taxable. Um, the educational facilities, you know, I agree that that is a, that can be a nonprofit, but the Chick-fil-A, the bookstore, I went there. I know what they charge. It's not a nonprofit. Uh, but the state laws are different between Rhode Island and Pennsylvania regarding, regarding nonprofits. Now, if somebody wants to file a lawsuit, that's certainly, certainly their right to do as well.
I think it should still be looked into. And lastly, 7A. I've been here for 16 or 17 years talking about this, the garbage fee. I know you're going to pass it, but it's, it's got to be sound. You know, I, I've supported some of you up there for every election you run in, but I've had it. If this passes tonight, I can't in good conscience support any of you up there anymore. And it won't just be my vote. There's a lot of people that come up to me and agree with what I say. So, it'll be a lot of votes that you'll be losing. So, uh, you keep saying you're going to do something, you're going to do something, but for 16 or 17 years now, nothing has been done. So, I think if this passes tonight, it's time for a change. You get maybe people up there that will do something for the taxpayers of this city. You say you do something, well, yeah, you might do a favor for me or John Doe down the street, but you don't do anything for all the taxpayers in this city. The homeowners struggle, and yet, year after year after year, you keep passing this illegal fee. As I say, year after year, we pay our property taxes, have our garbage picked up. We shouldn't be paying $300 more. So, that's all I have to say, so. Just remember when you vote tonight, about Election Day.
Thank you. Sarah Lancaster?
Sarah Lancaster, citizen of Scranton, as my mother was and my mother's mother. And I live at 106 Hope Way, Lower West Side. And I have some, uh, issues to discuss and some questions to be answered because, uh, I am a part of this city and I paid a $1,300 tax bill for my property. One of the things I wanted to know is, what does it mean for a street to be dedicated? Does it mean that the city now has ownership of that street all the way through the cul-de-sac where I live? Or does it mean that it's the street and properties that are by it? 20 feet away from my, the side of my house is a fence, that Habitat for Humanity building. I forgot to mention that. I have a Habitat for Humanity house, which has now been disbanded. There is no more Habitat for Humanity of Lackawanna County. Anyway, beyond that fence, there's a railroad track. The train comes by my house at all hours, at all times, rumbles, tumbles, whatever. Now, because the fence that Habitat for Humanity erected, it, there's a hole in it from wind, and people walk right by my house to take the shortcut through the tracks to get wherever. Now, years ago, my son did it, and I wasn't sure. I thought it was a city policeman, but it was a railroad policeman who stopped him and gave him a trespassing citation or whatever. But there's still people that do it. So, I, what I want to know is, is the city responsible for that access for the public to walk through, past my house, and into the railroad? Or is it the railroads? I wrote an email to the Railroad Association to ask them whose property it was, to say these are the railroads, and they never answered me back.
We could, we could definitely check on that for you, and, and you're down by, by, behind the baseball field, right? Is that, that's where Hope Way is?
Right.
Okay, very familiar with that area. We could check on that. My, my guess is the city does not own the fence, but we can certainly check.
Well, I, Habitat erected the fence, but I'm, I'm, the land that, that the fence is on, is that cities or the railroads? Do you know what I mean?
We could check on that, but, like I said, my guess is it's not the cities. It's probably the railroads, but we could check and get an answer for you.
Okay, so, uh, because of that, broken fence, the access to the railroad, we now have blight. We have illegal dumping, we have trespassing. I myself had a fire. I heard the gentleman inform me, say that. And, uh, it was abandoned for like two and a half years. There was a bunch of litigation between nationwide, and I finally moved back into my house. But in the meantime, they stole my copper pipes, they vandalized, or graffiti'd my side of my house. I had to redo the siding and all this. So, I lost my train of thought. Oh, the whole thing is, who's policing that area? If it's, if it's the regular city police, and if the street was already dedicated, which means that the city's now caring for the infrastructure of the street. There's sewer grates in the street, only two of them, but is, is it now going to be a street light erected? Because the sign is there, Hope Way is there. Does that mean that, like, I can go to Google Maps and find my house? Sometimes yes, sometimes no. But I have to get to Cross Street, Meridian Avenue? So, what does it mean? Is, is the city really dedicated? Does the city own the street?
The, usually when a development is made, the city assumes responsibility for the street. Now, when it was, when your home and that development was built, I don't think any of us were here.
No, we weren't.
But all the, all of the streets, when a development is, is, is done, the city takes responsibility. So, again, we could check, but as far as police in your neighborhood, that's certainly the city's responsibility.
What about a street light?
Street light would, again, my guess is it's going to be the city's responsibility. Other than that fence and what goes on on the railroad's property, that would be rail, most likely railroad police.
Yeah, because now 10 cities move there. It used to be wherever it was, and then they got evicted, and now it's like 350 yards away from my house that way going toward town. So, I'm thinking that that's who robbed my copper pipes and whatever else, but.
In that probab- I would guess that's on the railroad company's property. Um, and we've, we've worked with the railroad police before when there's been issues down the, down the other end of, of the city. Um, but as far as police protection, paving the street, streetlights, that's on the city.
How do I, how do I get, how do I get the ball rolling for the street light and for the, uh, policing of the whole thing?
Well, the street lights, if you, if you can get the number off the, off the pole and provide us with that number, then we could make a request.
Well, I, I guess the,
There's a, there's a pole there.
Is the street light out, or there's no street light?
There's no street light. I want one erected in the middle of the whole fence area so that we can see if somebody's sneaking by and illegal dumping behind the fence.
So, there's no utility poles on your street at all for power or for telephone?
No.
No?
So, for, for a street light, you would, um, there's a petition that would be given to the city. You know, you get your neighbors to sign it, deliver it to the city. That's the process to get a street light put in.
Not ev-
You could have another, you could, you could finish your thought.
Not everybody's that neighborly, and, uh, half the time, I'm afraid to talk to any of my neighbors because they do drugs or whatever the case may be. But I want to know if, if it's a, if it's- to know if, if it's, if it's up to me, as a property owner, to maintain the, because there's fallen trees now. On that side of the railroad, there was trees erected, and now they're all dead, and they're falling this way onto the fence by my house. Is that, is that the railroad stuff? Is that my stuff, or is that city stuff?
Yeah, Ms. Lancaster, if you want to leave your name, a contact number, and your actual address on Hope Way, uh, with Kathy, uh, we can definitely have someone get out there and take a look at it, and do all the particulars for you, and actually take a site survey and see what's there.
Okay.
And the best way to go, because we're, we're kind of guessing right now on what's on the property.
Right, right.
So, if we get somebody with the knowledge on site, we'll know exactly the best way to proceed with this, to make sure you have adequate lighting.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you just leave, leave your number-
One more thing, one more thing. Stormwater, stormwater tax, stormwater tax. I think, I, I sent a letter to the paper, they said they were going to print it, but they never did. If we pay $300 a year for garbage tax, and my $1,300 a year for property tax, and now we might have a stormwater tax, I think that we should mandatory recycling and pay as you go, because I only have one bag of garbage, and the guy across the street from me is fifteen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please, please leave your contact information. The next speaker is Alfreda Martin.
Hello. Um, I'm a resident, a homeowner, same way over on Hope Way. I live at 111. There's a property right next to me, 113. I have been calling the city a number of times. The lady just abandoned the house, there's all kind of animals, trees have fallen down. I, I mean, I don't know what else to do, because I'm afraid that somebody, if they, if they start a fire, my house is going to burn too. And she just abandoned it. And I've been calling the city, and they said there's nothing they can do. As long as she pays the taxes, the house can stay abandoned. It looks terrible. It looks terrible over there. And there, I mean, I want to know, like, what can I do? Because, I mean, I'm afraid, when I go to sleep at night, is somebody going to just burn her place down? I don't know.
We'll contact the License and Inspection Department for you, and ask them to do something about it, but, uh, there are things that can be done, that aren't being done, so we'll see what we can do.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know if that, do you know if the property was condemned, by the way? Is there an orange sticker on the house at all?
No, I mean, they, they came out, because when she abandoned the house, she had a, a above-ground pool.
Yeah.
And she just left it there with water, and I had to call them, they said there were so mosquita, many mosquitoes back there. I mean, they did drain it, but af, but after that, like, they kept coming out numerous times, putting things on her property, but I don't know, like, if she paid, whatever they do, they kept putting it on, but now, she's, she hasn't been back there for years. It's, it's been like that for years.
And she's paying her taxes?
So, I don't know.
Oh, all right.
I don't know, because Habitat closed down, and just left everybody back in that cul-de-sac. Just, you know, they just said, "We're closing down, you have to take care of everything," and, I mean, that's all they said.
Okay.
So, I just want to know if there could be something done about it.
Well, we'll report it for sure, again, and see where we're at. We'll, we'll try to find out if taxes are paid. If the taxes aren't paid for the last two years, there, there may be some things we could do at the land bank for that property as well.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Bob Bolus?
Evening, Council, Bob Bolus, Scranton. First off, I'd like to talk about Naught Park on two points. One, about the parking up there. I think it's an absurdity that we take a $10,000 flat fleet from the hospital, let them pick up some of the trash up there, rather than charge them, just like they would be if they were parking in the downtown mall, or any other parking garage in this city. That's revenue loss. The one-time fee is a joke. You need to set it up, where they pay every day to park, long-term parking, whatever. That's money that we're taking out of this city. So, we need to very, look just as hard as we can at it. We've given enough away to, uh, hospitals, schools, and other charities in this town. It's time to worry about the citizens. And, uh, I think you need to turn anything down that goes toward that, other than regular parking, just same comparable rates you would be at the, uh, Electric City, or the mall, or anywhere else. There's no other benefit. That's our property, and it should be well-capitalized, and bring in every pit of revenue it can. The other part, Mr. Goohan, I take an issue with, is with Hinton. Even though it was bid, and it was put out, Hinton had no business buying it, he's a city employee. You're the one who pushed for new ethics and everything else, put it back up for rebid the right way, and that's it. And then, city employees aren't allowed to bid it. It's as simple as that. There's no in-between on it. If we're going to follow the rules, let's live by the rules. So, that should be put back up for bid the right way, and get rid of any question of impropriety in this city. The other part, which is kind of funny, I didn't see anybody go to the, uh, hearing on the, uh, tax abatement for the, uh, owner of the mall. We lost how much money there. Nobody ever showed up to object to it, or anything else, he gets another benefit. Yet, nobody's pushed for a reassessment of the mall. There's millions of dollars we're wasting, and we're complaining about how we survive, yet you take it out on these people that live in the city called taxpayers. So, you're going to push something, or you want to lead this city, then you lead by example, and that's making people pay their just due. I got whacked 50 grand that I owe on taxes on a church that was getting torn down, yet nobody came to my defense, yet you come to the defense of the mall, the parking garage, and everywhere else, and you let them get away with murder, so to speak. And you are murdering the people in this city by destroying their lives. The other part of this is, uh, Highland Associates. Highland's been around a long time. All due respect, there's still Highland Associates, their past was well-publicized. To me, a leopard's a leopard, you're paying them, you get rid of their spots, he's still a leopard. Okay? There's still people that are controlling the company, they're very strong politically in this area. $10 million to fix this building, get other bids. That's the American way. Not just sit with they sat here, and want to sell us their bill of goods, let's hear 10 other people sell us a bill of goods. And if it doesn't come out where we want it, then we should turn around and, uh, let some private developer come in and have this building. You have two buildings in this area. You have the Southern Union Building, that could be purchased, a modern facility, with parking and everything, or the, uh, former Credit Union. Half the price of what it's going to cost us to do this. I blame the past administrations, the past politicians, that let this building go in to the disreity it is. They sat on their butts, they squandered the money, and didn't do the job they were being paid to do. That's why we don't need another Highland, or another person coming in, taking more money, and give us less for what we're doing while we fill their pockets. This is the prime example why the building's where it is now. And that's because of the people that led the building, or the city, didn't lead by example, they lent by stupidity and carelessness around here. And, uh, we can't just continue to see it happen. We need to turn around and, uh, push for a reassessment of the mall. I talked to, uh, Mr. Evans, he's going to see that, I get the, uh, copy of the original, and I say that very clearly, the original agreement between the city and Basilica and the parking garage. And whatever happened after that, we could care less. We have 500 parking spaces, we put up $5 million. It's either we get the 500 spaces unconditionally, or we get the $5 million bucks back. That's how we run a city, and that's what we need to start doing around here. If we're going to lead, that's how we need to lead.
Thank you, Mr. Bolus.
And, the last thing I want to say is on the garbage, I think it should be tabled again, till you know where every single penny is gone for that garbage, and why we're paying to get rid of our garbage, when we're paying taxes on taxes. School board, everybody else in this city, isn't paying attention where we're squandering our money. Check the garbage fee, and know where you're spending the money, not just giving away. Fuel is cheaper, all operations are cheaper, yet you're still blowing $300 on everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron Omen?
Hello, everybody. I'm back for about 15 minutes. You know, I have to agree with, as much as I hate to, Mr. Evans and Mr. Donahue about this building. This building is Scranton. It's the past, and it should be the future. And I know spending all that twice as much money as a, a new modern building isn't practical, but still, this, this is, this is Scranton. This building is Scranton. That's, I just don't think, I think our money ought to be spent on it, instead of, uh, disregarding it. Of course, it doesn't matter what I think, but I was talking to a lady Friday, and she told me I was nuts thinking that. She said, "Get a nice, modern building." I just don't think so. You know, I've told you people, when I go someplace with Roseanne, she doesn't like to acknowledge that I'm with her, so I was sitting on a bench, and this lady started asking me why, uh, I avoid speaking on local issues. It's mainly because I don't have a computer to look up facts, and really, you've got some of the most knowledgeable, intelligent people come here, like, like Joan and Marie, and Les, and Dave, Mr. Bolus, Lee Morgan. They have computers and can look up the, the facts and, and things. All I got's the, the newspaper and television to go by. I don't have much faith in, in this leftist newspaper, they, for distortions to me. I'd like to know why, with all these parking places that come up in the mall, why can't the Globe Store use it for temporary parking to go across the street? I've been, I don't know the legalities of it, but I don't see why we can't use it somehow, it's ours, you know? I, I hear Mr. Bolus talk about it, and some others. Is there something I'm missing? It, it's, it's our parking places, and we're not getting paid on them. We ought to be able to use them somehow. It's nice to see all these people here tonight. I'd like to say something about one of my neighbors, that is, it's heartwarming, that she is so concerned about my welfare. They send me these letters. This idiot sends me these little letters all the time. The last one, she wanted to know why I didn't pay my garbage fee, I guess it was two months ago. You know, I don't mean this as a brag, I got an antique car that's insured for more than that dump she lives in, and she's ridiculing me in this letter for not paying my garbage fee. I'll pay it when I'm ready. Was it $45 extra, or something? I don't need, you know, I don't, I don't understand why I keep getting these ridiculous letters from her. I guess it's good she's concerned about my welfare. I just wanted to say that, so that the word would get back to her on your dime. Aren't you happy I agreed with you?
I'm thrilled, I'm excited.
As much as I don't want to, this building should be saved. Y'all need to go to Lacoona College, tell them to give us our $3 million back to work on something that's ours, instead of something that's theirs, that's not even being used. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Marie Schumacher. Uh, last week, I, I talked about this building, and what I thought had been done, and, but I hadn't had time to go back and dig through my records. So, I did take some time this week, and what I found was, uh, and I, I know it was painted, but as a, as a capital project, there was during the first, I think, five years of this century, one and a quarter million dollars spent on the, um, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system. So, uh, that was a pretty significant, and then, just a couple of other things, because I thought it sort of typical of the city. Uh, this one says, "The, the loose slate on the roof of City Hall Tower has been repaired, and plans are underway to restore the entire exterior of the building." That's 10 years ago. And now, we'll move up to four years ago, when it says, um, "The court-right administration was barely into office last year when pipes burst and caused significant flooding and water damage to some offices. A few months later, City Hall's elevator went down, literally, for extended repairs that forced public meetings to be held off, for, off-site for a few weeks. Uh, during this time, the administration's concerns about the Victorian Gothic-style building's exterior areas, like the roof, masonry, and steeples, which could be bigger ticket items, grew." Uh, they have been sinking, Mr. Hinton said he has been sinking, seeking quotes from masonry, architecture, and engineering companies that could conduct the review of City Hall's needs, but so far, few with expertise in historical buildings. Uh, Mr. Bozoni plans to look into whether historic preservation funding is available, like the half a million dollar matching grant Keystone Recreation Park and Conservation Fund grant that helped finance the library project. Ideally, the city would assemble multiple grants into the funding package for City Hall renovators, renovations. So, there you go. You know, i- it just takes forever to get anything done here. 10 years, four years, and here we are, back to ground zero. Uh, on to the other items. Mr. Evans, do you have the city's credit rating for me tonight?
Yes, I'll talk about the motions.
Pardon?
I'll talk about the motions.
Okay, it is not a, uh, it is not an investment grade bond rating, though, right?
That's correct.
And do we have a date, uh, on when we expect we are going to meet that portion of the exit plan?
I'll talk about that.
Okay, good. I will look forward to that. Uh, then, last Thursday's Times Tribune included a legal notice of an RFQ for a downtown Scranton connectivity plan. I went back through the budget, I didn't see anything about connectivity program, and I don't even know what we're going to connect, and what kind of money are we talking about? Is there money in the capital budget?
That was pre- previously titled "The Transportation Study," so that's the on-street parking, uh, walkability, pedestrian safety, all of those things, that will be the connectivity plan.
Okay, so that'll be part of the, uh, Scranton tomorrow?
Well, it's not part of them, it's, the city's going to do it.
I mean, what with the money we've given them, which, again, okay.
Yeah, it's not, no, yeah, it's not part of that.
Okay, I'll go on to the next. Is there a budget for the expensing of the funds that we have provided to Scranton tomorrow?
You would have to ask them, as far as their budget goes.
Well, you said they come in quarterly and meet with you back in the clerk's office, right?
Yes.
Maybe you could ask them to bring one at their next meeting, which is scheduled when?
Uh, I'm not sure when it, if they scheduled the next meeting yet.
We just had them in about three weeks ago, I think.
Yeah, so, within the next quarter, obviously.
Well, you go to their meetings, don't you? Didn't you say you go to their meetings?
One of, I don't go to their board meetings, I go to a subcommittee meeting. But, uh, yeah, we could, we could talk about that.
Well, maybe when you're down there, you could, you could see if we can get something of that nature. And then, also on them, when is the remediation of the lot at Linden in Wyoming going to get underway?
I'm not sure the exact date, but it is still on target to be completed by the end of the year, so, it's going to happen fairly soon.
The entire project, or just the remediation?
The entire project.
Yeah. I can guarantee, if it doesn't get started, it's never going to get ended.
Well, certainly with the weather, but yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh, and then, on to, uh, can I just, two, two quick things?
Sure.
Because I think they're timely. One is the paving program. Couple years ago, we didn't do a paving program at all, because everybody else had done, had gotten in, in their- done, had gotten in their bids out and in, and there was no, it was getting very expensive. And I keep reading in the paper, all these municipalities are putting things out for bid. So, I am concerned about what the status of our paving program is. And also, when we're going to start sweet street, street sweeping, because there is a lot of grit out there that's going right down the drains.
Thank you.
Good evening. Dave Dobson, resident taxpayer. I mentioned on the way in, one of our new attendees, Gwyneth, was trying to get in the front door and it was locked. So, I figured it out that I could go around the back door. I suggested to her that I do the same, but, you know, somebody just had to say, "Well, if they're too stupid, then all better." Well, you know, same guy every week, comes up with derogatory things to say about it and condescending things to say about them. I won't miss him in heaven or hell, to be honest with you. Now, I have a question. It has two parts. Do you know who wants to buy City Hall, or do you lack the knowledge of the college that's interested? Do you? I mentioned last week, it's a nonstarter. We have a chance at a building down the street. Well, it's five million dollars and that would be what we'd have to kick in if we didn't, if we got the grant. But, how many millions will it take to convert it over? Look at the Globe store. You know, eighteen million dollars later, and we took money out of the contingency fund and everything else, surplus fund. So, okay, we better watch ourselves. And furthermore, this is a historic building, and as far as I'm concerned, it's the heart of the city. Now, getting to the caucus last week, which I didn't see until I turned on the television. Once again, major issues being discussed, and who appears? Tony from the Long Association and his various associates, and a bunch of school kids that want to tell adults how they should live. And it just, it gets ridiculous. A thousand feet from a school, eighteen percent? Can any businessman give up eighteen percent of his profits? Could you, Wayne? Would you be happy with that?
No, I wouldn't like to, but I think that's, we brought him in here for the conversation and discussion, so I think it's ongoing.
Well, the conversation I'd like to see end. Furthermore, it's illegal for kids to buy cigarettes in the first place. Okay, I could see something with the advertising. I think that is federal law. They're not supposed to advertise cigarettes outside the stores. But, you know, it's just ungodly. You're standing in a, in a, in the middle of a racetrack with thirty thousand horsepower flying around there, and you get Mr. Attarity over to tell you, "Sir, you can't have that vape pipe here. You have to go way back behind the stands and you can't see the race." And, you know, I'm not interested in that. I have libertarian roots along with my somewhat more democratic ideas. It's just ridiculous. Time and time again, I think that vaping is a serious alternative to slow down on, not so much the nicotine content, but the smoke is about seventy percent of the damage that you can affect on, on your body. And then, on top of it, with the Times article yesterday in the editorial page, they voraciously defended a mayor that built one parking garage after another, ran up all kinds of debts, ignored City Hall. It was just one new thing after another. You know, I was up in Naught Park and the lady, a volunteer, was complaining that, you know, this mayor just starts something and gets done eighty percent of it and just leaves it behind to, with her. She was taking care of the flower gardens and stuff like that. And it just went on and on and on. I voted for him two times. And then, the third time, I just said, "No more." I started hearing about homeless people with the chief of police at the time, not the guy we have now, throwing homeless people's belongings into the river. Going on and on, the overbuilding of parking garages, and it just got so ridiculous that it wasn't even funny anymore. And please, I mean, every time this guy shows up, it's when you're talking about a major issue. It's getting a little more than uncanny. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Fifth order, five emotions.
Mr. Perry, any motions or comments?
Just, excuse me, just a few comments. Well, Lenny, I will get in touch with you as soon as we hear something back, which I'm sure will be shortly, and we'll get some, some kind of, some schedule set for you. Something I wanted to bring up, and Ms. Honawatt has brought it up anyway, when this whole issue of City Hall and some of the expenses came up, from time to time, a city this size that owns this many assets with facilities, there's going to be repair maintenance. It's just the way it is. But I think something that we can do more preemptively to prepare for these things and reduce costs is have a PM calendar or preventive maintenance calendar. I know we've discussed this in the past, but I think I'd like to, I think I would like to take a harder look at it. In my mind, a preventive maintenance manager would have a kind of like all-encompassing accountability of our facilities. And I don't know if it would be a full-time position, if it would be extra on top of someone else's other responsibilities, or if it would be contracted out to a third party, but I definitely think, you know, we're being penny wise and pound foolish without having a good preventive maintenance schedule. Because as you guys know, exterior issues lead to interior issues. As mortar goes, bricks start to move, they start to crack. As that happens, more water gets in, now we have interior issues. And anybody will tell you moisture is just nasty. Water's nasty to buildings, and the longer it goes on, the worse it gets. Where, you know, if we had quarterly or semi-annual inspections of the buildings, we could have noticed something, set something up with just some, adding some mortar, patching it up, the brick, you know, the stones would never be loose, they would never crack, you know, but unfortunately, you know, we don't have something that encompassing in place. We do have some things. I know we have a lot of preventive maintenance schedules for our cars, our police, our fire, but as far as our facilities, I think, I think there's more that we can do here to prevent some of these shock and awe bills and assessments that we get. We kind of seem like we put it on, and when I say "we," you know, the city of Scranton, I'm not talking about any administrations, it's just, it is what it is. This is our building. And, you know, I believe we need to take care of our assets and our facilities. And I think we can do a lot better at lowering the cost of it and the burden to all of us if we just kind of, you know, we took a better look at the overall, ongoing maintenance of it. So, if council doesn't have an issue, I would like to send out our first feelers to Mr. Bolzoni and the mayor. I would like to invite them in to upcoming caucus to discuss specifically a preventive maintenance calendar with the possibility of, I don't want to say creating a new position, I'm just talking about creating accountability, where that accountability would be the preventive maintenance of our assets and facilities. And, you know, I'm sure this could be a pretty lengthy, ongoing discussion, but I think it's something that the five of us and, you know, of course, Mr. King, Mr. Gallagher, Mr. Potchus and the administration would want to be in on. And this, I expect this to grow and become, you know, a more, more of a positive issue going forward. Because, you know, for one, I don't want to lose City Hall. This is our history. This is, this is part of who we are. And, you know, I understand that as of right now, you know, it's, it's a huge bill. We do have an application on this for a grant, which would, which would help, but, no, it's still, it's still tough to, tough to see. And I think we need to do everything possible to hold on to this building. This is our history. This is who we are. And that's, you know, that's, call me nostalgic, call me whatever, but that, you know, that's just how I feel at this point in time. And I don't want to see it get to the point where it's too out of hand, where we're unable to do anything with it. So, maybe if we can get started and if we can, you know, get around this issue, because I know we will, where there's a will, there's a way, and one way or another, we're going to fix this issue and take care of it, move on. I just want to see this issue, you know, with emergency fixes with firehouses and, and all our other assets. I want to see, I want, I don't want us to go to the point of breaking point before something gets done. I think there's better ways to do it. Anybody who's worked in, in industry knows that anybody who owns any kind of assets or facilities, they have an excellent preventive maintenance process, because it's just the way to go. It's how you take care of your business, it's how you take care of your assets. That's, that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Any motions or comments?
Yes, just to add on to what Mr. Perry just said, Ms. Reed, would you also be able to ask the administration for a breakdown of the current building maintenance plan? I also got correspondence back from Brian Fallon, the Director of Parks and Recreation, regarding the price of the show, of the new Showmobile. And that price was seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. So, Mrs. Reed, would you also be able to send a letter to Mr. Fallon and the, and the mayor asking for copies for, of the invoices for where that work? And also, I'd like to make a motion to put a resolution on the agenda for next week in support of our Complete Count Committee. Data obtained by the census will help, is used to help determine how approximately six hundred and seventy-five billion in federal government funds are distributed. And just a little quick stat, up to two thousand of federal, two thousand dollars of federal funding will be lost for each person not counted. So, that's upwards of twenty grand for federal funding lost over ten years for each person not counted.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so ordered.
That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, any motions or comments?
A few comments. First of all, I'd like to reinforce my position on the restoration of City Hall. So, to be perfectly clear, we need to take responsibility for this building, but also be open to create, creative ideas if they make sense. But always remembering that we are the stewardess of this building, we are the caretakers of this building, and that's our responsibility and we should take it very seriously. The current credit rating is VB plus. Generally, credit ratings do not change unless there is an event that requires some review, like incurring of additional debt. However, I did participate in a conference call not long ago where several financial experts were on the, on the call, and we basically tried to make an impact on them as far as our financial story and how it's improved. So, we hope that pays dividends when the time comes for the new credit rating to unfold. But our goal, of course, should be at the very least a triple, triple B minus rating, which is the indication of an investment grade rating. Something we haven't seen in years and something that would open the door for sound and strategic borrowing at favorable rates or further debt restructuring if it made sense for the city. But part of our case for a better rating is to formulate a debt policy, as well as an investment policy, as directed by the recovery plan. So, I had conversations with Bealzoni this week. He's in the process of formulating those plans now, and we should expect something before council in the very near future to create that answer to the recovery plan. I also want to talk about some of my debates with PennDOT officials. First of all, there was the Kildare's Housing Project. This council tabled legislation in the hopes of having a conversation on the impact of DOT rules imposed because of that project. While that road is considered a state road, the lack of response by PennDOT officials to even discuss this matter is troubling at best. The second issue is one that Councilman Donahue and myself have been working on. Several months ago, we met with PennDOT officials, Chief Garziano, DPW Director Gallagher, to discuss the intersection of Pittston Avenue and Orchard Street. At the time, there were thirty-eight documented traffic accidents at that intersection over the last three years. As of today, there are thirty-nine. So, we asked PennDOT at the time for what we thought was a reasonable and simple request to place a four-way stop sign system at that location and do a ninety-day trial period, and then reconvene to review the results of that trial. The PennDOT officials in attendance, of course, said they had to go back to their office to discuss requests with the decision makers and get back to us. Months have gone by and, of course, we had no response. Every day that passes is another opportunity for a tragedy to happen at that intersection. Several things became clear at that meeting. DOT officials were seemingly more concerned with traffic congestion than they were with the issue of vehicular or pedestrian safety. While Pittston Avenue is a state road, Orchard Street is a city street, and as such, we should at least be equal partners in what is decided at that location. So, with the risk of getting into the weeds a little bit, I'm going to talk about the difference between a road and a street as they relate to this discussion, something you may not have heard before. But a road is basically a high-speed connection between two places. It's about moving cars quickly. It's designed to minimize congestion, et cetera. That's the primary focus and can be, it can't be a detriment to bikes, pedestrians, joggers, et cetera. This is the DOT model, though. Streets, on the other hand, are more complicated. They have on-street parking, maybe bike traffic, turning traffic, different speeds, pedestrians. This is what you find in most neighborhoods. It's what people, why people feel safer on streets than they do on roads, because they are encouraged by design and other external factors to move cars, to move slower. So, what Pittston Avenue is, according to many urban planners, is what's really called a strode. A strode is a hybrid between a road and a street. So, PennDOT tries, in my viewpoint, to move traffic quickly and efficiently through a neighborhood, street, which is complicated because of the bikes and pedestrians and joggers, et cetera. So, a strode just doesn't work. It shouldn't be pigeonholed into the normal DOT design guidelines, because it's neither a road or a street. So, it should not be applying those one-size-fits-all, strict DOT rules on what is clearly a city-street environment. Earlier today, I had a conversation with Chief Garziano, and he indicated to me that he has started the process of gathering information on the traffic and speed of vehicles near that intersection, and he should have that information back to us over the next several weeks. So, with that said, I'm going to ask Mrs. Reed if we can invite PennDOT officials to a work session or a public caucus to discuss their design rules, regulations, and how they impact our city streets. Now, I prefer a work session, because I think we can meet with them face-to-face and have a dialogue and a conversation that hopefully will bring about a broader idea of how we can benefit each other. But we will discuss the format, yes, as council, and we'll all decide how we want to do that. But Chief Garziano, of course, and Danny Gallagher, the DPW director, should be invited as well. I would suggest sometime after April fifteenth, I want to give that study a time to be finished and for us to have an opportunity to review it. And finally, I don't want you to forget that every day is your chance to make this city a little better, and that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Gawn, any motions or comments?
Yes, a few. First, I'd like to make a motion that we enter into third order at our next council meeting, the memo that we received March twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, dealing with municipal building improvements from the business administrator, Dave Bolzoni.
Is there a second on the question?
Yes, on the question. I just want to talk for a minute about the memo that will be put into third order next week, because it sheds a lot of light, I think, on the thought process that the administration has on this building and how they, they might want to move forward. So, first of all, Mr. Bolz, I'm not going to read through this whole thing into, I'm not going to read the whole thing into the record, because it's about four or five pages, but I just want to touch on some of the highlights, because I think it's important. Mr. Bolzoni states that, "While an alternate solution to renovating City Hall may be a bridge too far, we may not know unless we investigate it further." I would agree with Mr. Bolzoni in that statement. One of the things that came to light as far as this memo is concerned is that the business administrator was apprised of the sale of the former PennFed Credit Union Headquarters Building on Franklin Avenue. He says the building presently houses a credit union branch. The corporate functions have been relocated to Washington, DC. The branch office will eventually close. The building, therefore, is mostly vacant. He says, "I would fairly confidently state that the building is in turnkey condition for municipal use." He gives a little bit of background on this whole situation. The city, which we have on our agenda tonight, applied for roughly five and a half million dollar RACV grant with the state. The request was submitted based on an eight million dollar authorization The request was submitted based on an eight-million-dollar authorization for municipal building improvements approved in two thousand seventeen. Since the grant is matching, the maximum the city could apply for would be fifty percent of the estimated project cost. Mr. Bozoni states that he was advised that this round of RACB funding might be limited. He says, "While I am hopeful that the city receives full funding, I would also like everyone to consider the prospects of full funding with a sense of realism," which I think is important, because even though we're putting in for the RACB grant for nearly five-and-a-half million dollars, that doesn't mean that we're going to get that. And as he states in his memo, he's been advised that this round of funding might be limited. He says, "While I'm hopeful that the city receives full funding, I would also like everyone to consider the prospects," oh, I already read that part, "the remaining funds required to complete the project might be obtained through a debt issue. Market factors for debt issuance are presently favorable for the city. The city might be able to use a RAP concept to keep debt service at a minimum until some existing debt matures. The city may also consider a three-year construction note during the renovation period. Construction notes typically require interest only during the period the note is outstanding. Principal would be due at maturity and would be repaid from a bond issue." This is one of the things that I talked about last week, and where my questions come in and where I'm concerned, and I think we should slow down just a bit and take a more deliberative approach as it relates to financing, and the impact that this is most definitely going to have on the budget, no matter which way the administration decides to move. So, I think we need to have a conversation about that. Mr. Bozoni also mentions the logistical issues abound during construction, and the gentleman from Highland Associates touched on this as well. He mentions that the building was last overhauled in nineteen seventy-nine. During that time, the entire operation was moved to the Connell Building. So, I think we need to also take into account the cost of, depending on how the city intends to do it, moving offices, moving employees, and what kind of additional cost that will take on. He also mentions, which I think is interesting, that the city might have options following the Sorenti Building Project. He says that this public safety building project might not be completed substantially until the end of the year. I think we need to have an additional conversation about that and what he means by that statement. He also says in his memo that he would not recommend a fragmented approach to improvements, which is what I had mentioned is a possibility in the caucus this evening. In other words, if we're going to do this, depending on how it impacts the budget, we maybe want to look at taking care of the first and second priorities, the things that are really pressing first. Mr. Bozoni does not think that we should take a fragmented approach to that. He also mentions, which I think is important, "A partial completion would require an annual capital budget allocation to address the issues in entirety, which would be in addition to the debt service requirements for the amounts borrowed. The building, even with full renovations, has issues which will not be eliminated, and obviously, as everyone knows, parking will remain an issue." Couple of the other things that he mentions in here that, again, I think is very interesting is that the members of the administration, I don't know if it was Mr. Bozoni and anyone else, but toured the PennFed Building. He mentions that it impresses one with how much turnkey potential the building has for municipal use. Parking is substantial. Refuse payments could be made at drive-up teller windows. The Licensing and Permits Department could have personnel located behind teller windows on the first floor, along with many other conveniences we presently do not have in our operation. That building is totally secure. Upper-floor access can only be made through secure access cards, and he mentions that he would estimate that operating costs might be substantially lower than those presently realized and forecast, even upon improvement to the municipal building. He states that it's his understanding that the PennFed Building presently lists for approximately five million dollars, that we would need to have an additional conversation about additional cost to the city to make that building fully operational, but he feels that it should be relatively maintained, or relatively contained. The city would use the same debt structure without the need for construction financing. And then there's some other comments that he makes there. But I appreciate the memo. I do think that we need to continue to have this conversation. I'm not really sold either way yet, only because I think there is still a lot of outstanding questions. I think financing being one of them, what is going to be the impact of the budget? I think we need to see those numbers fleshed out a lot more. Mr. Perry's suggestion about the Preventative Maintenance Manager, I understand what he's saying. I disagree with it, though, just in the thought process that, it's my understanding that the Licensing, Inspections and Permits Director is the maintainer of the building, or should be in charge of maintaining the building. So, that should be one of his responsibilities. I don't know if we need to add another position in the budget that may be double work. I do agree, though, that we need to have, I think we need to have a public caucus with the mayor, with the Business Administrator, to discuss his memo, which I think is important, to discuss a building maintenance plan moving forward. I understand that this isn't just the fault of this administration, it's the past administrations going back decades, and it's easy to complain about what has not been done in this building and the oversight on the part of many administrations, but what we are tasked with as a council now is, what are we going to do moving forward? How are we going to maintain the building if we're staying here? And I would just like to know, you know, what direction the mayor and the Business Administrator want to move in, so we need a clearer picture on that. I do think, though, that we need to examine all options extremely carefully, using a meaningful deliberative approach, taking into account the immediacy of the building maintenance issues, which we saw firsthand by the PowerPoint, financing, and, most importantly, impact on the budget moving forward. And then I think we need to vote on the motion.
Are we still on the motion?
Yeah.
Is there a second? Actually, we're on the question.
On the question.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so ordered.
The second thing I wanted to mention, I agree with Mr. Perry that we need to, as I said, invite the mayor and the Business Administrator and any other members that might be helpful from the administration to a public caucus, but I think we should do that by motion. So, I would like to make a motion that City Council ask the mayor, the Business Administrator, and any other administration official that may be helpful in discussing this topic to a public caucus within the next few weeks.
Second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
The second thing, Mrs. Reed, I'm going to ask, just because I've been approached, I think it'll be helpful anyways, but I've been approached by a few members of different neighborhoods throughout the city who would like to see and request a park cleanup schedule. So, how does the city plan to address each park, when they're going to go in, since the spring is here and summer is approaching? How they're going to address the needs of each park, and what that schedule looks like, when and in what order? So, if we could ask the administration about that. Also, if you could ask the DPW when pothole patching will begin. Mrs. Schumacher had brought up about the street sweeper. I'm also curious, I may have missed this, but can we also ask if the city received the grant for the second street sweeper that we were going for? I can't remember if we did or not. And then if you could follow that up by when they're going to start that program. Last week, I inquired about the mayor appointing two people to the Ethics Board. We did get a response back from the mayor's office, and now I'm, Mrs. Reed, what did Mrs. Garvey say? I can't remember now. Okay. Okay, so the mayor, thank you, the mayor is actively in the process of submitting those names to council, and hopefully, we can get the ball rolling on that. Also, received a letter from a resident, I just want to read it really quick into the record, "Writing to you to find out why our neighborhood cannot get disgusting garbage and clothes from the riverbank behind the icebox cleaned up. I have spoken to DPW on behalf of the neighborhood at least three times. The responses, they know about it, yet it remains there for months. This is disturbing to me when I have company at my house for repairs, visits, et cetera. It stands out like the eyesore that it is. I'm asking you to see if you can do something for us. This causes blight and a rodent problem, which we don't need. I would appreciate it if you can help us." So, if we can forward this letter to the DPW, Mrs. Reed, please, and also, I don't know, maybe the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority can coordinate with the DPW some kind of cleanup. And we might want to copy Bernie McGirl on that letter as well. Lastly, the paving program for this summer, I don't even know if we're having one at this point, but if we could check on that, and I've also been asked by a resident to see if the administration would consider paving the sixteen and seventeen-hundred blocks of Wyoming Avenue. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. Most of our discussion tonight has been about the repair of this building or alternative solutions, and again, I would like to urge everyone to remain open-minded. Personally, I feel, judging by the numbers that we've seen so far, financially, it's in the city's best interest to explore other options. That's not to say that that's the route I fully support. If it costs more money to move, I wouldn't support it. But one thing that our caucus tonight really brought into my realization is, this ten-million-dollar-plus project doesn't take care of everything. There's a number of items, and big-ticket items, that are not replaced or repaired in this renovation. One of the biggest is being windows, and I understand the reasoning why, because it would cost even millions more to do that, but when you're looking at doing all these upgrades, you would hope some of the benefit would be energy efficiency, less utility bills. We're not going to achieve a whole lot of that by leaving these old windows in place. Also, some of the other items that aren't taken care of in this review are the bathrooms. The bathrooms are functional, but if you've gotten in them, they're not, especially the first-floor bathroom is not a state-of-the-art facility by any means. Security, which is something that has been brought up, Scranton City Hall is probably the only government building in the city that doesn't have any type of security. Whether that's something that needs to be looked at in the future or not is something that, you know, certainly up for debate, but that's not part of this plan as well. IT upgrades, which I know we spend a ton of money on trying to get our IT up to where it should be, it's nowhere near where it should be. And again, part of it, at least within this building, you know, is because of the age. Water shut-offs, I know I did meet with Paul Ahora, who handles almost all the building maintenance. I know there's a lot of issues with the current plumbing within our building, that to do a small repair in a bathroom, we have to shut down the whole plumbing system. That certainly shouldn't be the case, and without these bathrooms being addressed, I wonder what will happen with that as well. And finally, the last thing that really wasn't included at all, and I hope it's not in the building, but is any type of environmental issues. Looking at those pictures, to me, it looked certainly like it may be asbestos, there's also mold, there could possibly be lead. Removing these type of items is not cheap, and that's not included in this ten-million-dollar figure as well. I think the suggestion that Mr. Bozoni made in his memo to explore the PennFed Building makes a lot of sense. I've never been in that building, but I do really like the idea of having parking for residents. One of the biggest frustrations with this building for any resident coming here is, there's only a couple spots, fifteen-minute spots in front of the building, there's no parking lot for the public, and you pay a meter. So, a lot of times, after driving around the block five, six times, they're frustrated before they even come in the building. Then going up a flight of stairs, waiting for an elevator, a new facility can be much more citizen-friendly for people coming in to pay a garbage bill, get a permit from Licensing and Inspections, and the building can be structured in a way where the first floor is all those departments that the public's interacting with every day, and then the upper levels would be the departments that don't have quite as much foot traffic. And on the parking note, one thing to keep in mind is, and again, it's a beautiful building, it's a historic building, I certainly am not saying tear it down or throw away the key, but this building was built before people had cars, so you could see where there's deficiencies from an ease-of-use perspective. So, I really think, looking at other facilities outside of this building, if the numbers make sense, really is the direction that we should be going. Like I said, a ten-million-dollar price tag, which in my opinion, doesn't even cover, maybe covers seventy-five percent of what needs to be done, verse purchasing a building that's listed for five million, that means hopefully, we'd be able to get it for less than that, doing some renovations, and having a new building with lower utility costs, it makes sense to explore. I do support the grant application, you know, it doesn't hurt to ask, but before voting for any actual funding, if the city were to do a match, it'd be five million dollars, I'm sure there would be debt associated with that, before voting on anything where we're actually spending money, I would want to see a side-by-side comparison based on the renovation of this building and a few other buildings that are possibly for sale in the city. But I do think the presentation tonight was helpful, and I do agree, if renovations are done, there needs to be a number of firms bidding, not just one. And finally, I know myself and a number of my colleagues spoke with some residents on the way in, they were going to speak, and then they talked to all of us, so we did get a list of, lengthy list, of issues with a property located, a four-unit property at twelve-oh-eight twelve-ten Filo Street. It's a four-unit apartment house. Residents state there's been forty-two police calls in the last couple of years, two or three abandoned cars towed, which I know that personally, because I helped them get them towed, three pipples removed, numerous quality-of-life violations. Today, a drug addict left and passed out on the neighbor's lawn next door, and part of the issue is that when the police go to this property or inspectors, the doors aren't answered. So, they're having a hard time getting in. So, if we could send correspondence, and there's much more here, I don't want to read it all over the air, but if we could send a copy of this letter to the police chief, to the Licensing and Inspections Office, to see what could be done. It sounds to me like it may qualify as a nuisance property. Because it's a rental property, we have another route to see if it's registered, so I'd like to check into that as well. If the building is not registered, that would trigger an inspection, which, from what it sounds like in this letter, if anyone walked into that building for an inspection, I don't think it would be passing. So, if we could pass this along to all those departments and ask for a reply, this has been going on for a long time, and this is one of the worst ones I've heard about in a while. So, that is all. Thank you.
Five B for introduction, an ordinance amending file of the council number twenty-eight, two thousand thirteen, an ordinance as amended transferring a temporary construction agreement of city-owned property located in the one-hundred block of Harrison Avenue to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Department of Transportation, for the construction of the removal of the Harrison Avenue Bridge and installation of a newly constructed Harrison Avenue Bridge for the sum of seven thousand dollars to extend the temporary easement from two years to five years with an updated offer of just, excuse me, of just compensation of ten thousand six hundred dollars.
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item five B be introduced into its proper committee. So moved. Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question. I just asked for clarification on this piece of legislation from the Law Department, and they did get back to Mrs. Reed. PennDOT needs additional time to finish this project. Originally, an easement was requested for two years, for which they offered seven thousand dollars as compensation. This legislation, they're asking to extend the temporary easement from two to five years and updating the compensation value to ten thousand six hundred dollars. Thank you.
On the question, yeah. Since we're looking at extending this agreement, I would like to ask PennDOT if they could find out from their contractor when they will be cleaning up the debris that has accumulated up and down the Lackawanna River from the construction or demolition of the old Harrison Avenue Bridge. The debris from the bridge construction has found its way all the way down along the banks of Lackawanna River, almost to the Taylor Line, so anybody who walks up and down the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Trail would see it, and my understanding is it came from the construction site, and frankly, I think it's a disgrace. So, I'll get with Mrs. Reed and draft a letter, if that's okay with everyone, and we'll get that out next week.
Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, six A, no business at this time. Seventh order, seven A, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, file of the council number fifty-nine, two thousand nineteen, amending file of the council number seventeen, two thousand eighteen, amending file of the council number four, two thousand eighteen, entitled, "An Ordnance Amending File of the Council Number Seventeen, nineteen ninety-four," entitled, "An Ordnance as Amended Authorizing the Governing Body of the City of Scranton to Enact a Waste Disposal and Collection Fee for the Purpose of Raising Revenue to Cover the Waste Disposal and Collection Costs incurred by the City of Scranton for the Disposal of Refuse by Imposing a Waste Disposal and Collection Fee of $300 for Calendar Year 2019, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter to extend the May 1, 2019 discount date to May 31, 2019, to enable residents to take advantage of the 10% discount when paying their refuse bill in full."
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question. I just want to make it clear that we're not... Council's not voting on the garbage fee or instituting the garbage fee. We've already done that back in, I think, December or January. This legislation that we're voting on is extending the May 1 discount date to May 31st. So that's all we're voting on. We are not voting on instituting the $300 fee that's already been voted on previously.
Yeah, this happened last year and again this year. The bills weren't all getting out, are going out later than anticipated, so we all felt that it was a good idea to continue with that.
We haven't voted on the garbage fee yet. So this is a vote on the garbage fee?
Well...
I don't think so, is it? Aime?
I'm sorry. I didn't hear.
Is it this a vote? What we're voting on right now is to extend the discount period. We're not voting to enact the garbage fee. I thought we already did that two months ago. Huh?
We did that.
Right.
That was part of the enablement legislation, I think, back in December, I think, right? Or at least I thought it was, anyway.
Yeah.
While we're on the question, two points with all of these fees and taxes. When the rate doesn't change, we do vote on them every year, although it's not mandatory, because each one of them does state annually every year thereafter. One thing I think we should look at, because we have had to extend this discount period because of delays in billing multiple years, is making that May 31st discount permanent instead of having to go every year and extend this. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption. Resolution number 108, 2019, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant application for redevelopment assistance capital program through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Office of the Budget in the amount of $5,376,583, accepting and dispersing the grant, if the application is successful, for the renovation of the Scranton Municipal Building.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted. There's no further business. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
This meeting is adjourned.